A little wild right now. There's like people stapling uh trim to the wall behind me as I'm typing. He's like, I'm gonna throw these staples. And I'm like, okay. And it's like, maybe I should go somewhere else.
We have a conference room here.
I also, I also have an office in this before. I did tell my home neighbors, I'm like, I'm just gonna be reluctant even in this before permanently. See you guys in about six or eight months.
I forgot about that office.
I don't think there's anything in there. I mean, I think there's a desk in there. I usually go, there's a conference room there, which is where I normally go. I don't normally go to my office.
Like to have all those spaces spread out.
Yeah.
Okay, it's one o'clock, Tuesday, September 3rd. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so today it is Commissioner Wynn's to give the pledge and invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Hallelujah, Father, all good and gracious. We give you thanks for the gift of our community and its citizens. Come, Holy Spirit, give us the strength and wisdom to love our community as you love us dearly. Help us to offer our hands to serve and our hearts to love through our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Okay, the first item would be the approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting, which are, which if there's no corrections, will stand approved.
Just a small typo. That's it.
Okay. We'll get that noted. Those will be approved. So next item will be public comment, which we ask you come up to the microphone and introduce yourself. We'll give you five minutes to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to come up to the mic. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Connie Bogart, Executive Director at Western Kansas Community Foundation, to allow the mayor to proclaim the week of September 13th through 22nd, 2024, as Welcoming Week in the city of Garden City.
I move the approve, September 13th or 22nd, 2024, as Welcoming Week in the city of Garden City, Kansas. I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
And I know Connie's here. If Connie wants to say a little bit about Welcoming Week, and then Mayor, is there an event to read this proclamation?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
I'll read the proclamation at the event. Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Connie Bogart. I'm the Executive Director of the Western Kansas Community Foundation. Now, well, Bailey Sater, our community development coordinator, is here this afternoon to talk a little bit about the events activities that we've planned for Welcoming Week, which is next week here in Garden City. It falls right between Fiesta and Fall Fest. You cannot think of a better attended community week by many, many people in our community and communities around us as well. So I'm trying to be ready to explain a little bit more about what we have in mind.
Thank you. So I can mention Welcoming Week is coming up pretty quickly. It's a week that's supposed to honor the diversity and welcoming spirit of our community. So with partnership with City of Garden City and Garden City Downtown Vision, we are doing a food hall sampling that we've kind of titled Local Delights, Local Fights, down at the Main Street Food and Brew Hall. We'll be able to sample food from all five of the vendors there on September 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we kind of invite the entire city to come out and taste some local flavors that you might not have tried yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we are looking forward to it. The food hall, we kind of all decided it was one of the most visible and most successful demonstrations of our multi-ethnicity here in Garden City. And a lot of people have checked it out. It's been a lot of great positive comments, but I think a lot of people still need to discover it. So keep up, maybe draw a little bit extra attention to the food hall and the vendors that are there. Wonderful food that they offer. So it's all free for the public between 5:00 and 8:00 on September 19th. We hope you can go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Enhilica Castillo Chapel on behalf of Community Mexican Fiesta Association to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of September 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Garden City, Kansas.
Matt, before we move on, Connie, were you wanting to get a picture with the Commissioners?
I'm close to.
Okay. Sorry, Matt.
That's okay.
I know I was gonna read it at the event, but we'll.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we're good for 6B now. Thank you.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Mayor, you'll read this at the, at the event as well?
Yes.
Okay. That, we're ready for 6C. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to allow the mayor to proclaim October 1st, 2024, as Rose Chris Day in the city of Garden City, Kansas.
May I move that we approve October 1st, 2024, as Rose Chris Day in Garden City, Kansas?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. And is Rose here?
I believe so.
If not, we'll go find her. This is a surprise.
I think so. I don't know what lengths they went to to
Uh oh.
keep this from her, but.
She might be downstairs.
I'm sure she's not too far away, so.
Were you gonna read that today, Mayor, or is it gonna be?
Yeah, she was. Yeah, so she was not aware of this coming to the table today, so it's kind of a surprise to her.
That's tricky.
But, yeah, it's kind of tricky getting her.
I didn't know if there was gonna be a celebration on the 1st, or if you, for whatever. Been hearing in the city for a long time. Dedicated.
Mayor, Commissioners, while we're waiting, if we we can address the meetings of note and the appropriation ordinance, if you'd like. There's several events on, under meetings of note. Some of these require RSVPs and out-of-town events, I believe. Still maybe working on the dates for the Western, the Southwest Kansas Coalition. I don't know that that's on there yet, but if you have any RSVPs, if you'd please coordinate those through the city clerk's office. And I think if we're ready for item 9A, that's the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2570-2024A.
Mayor, I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 2570-2024A.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. And we can go back to the proclamation.
All right. Again, you've motioned, you've motioned second and voted unanimously to approve October 1st, 2024, as Rose Chris Day in the city of Garden City, Kansas. And I believe, Mayor, you're gonna read the proclamation at this time?
Yes, and we'll get a picture after. So Rose, it's a surprise. Kept it from you. I'm sorry, but yeah, this is what the staff wanted to do, so we are proclaiming this proclamation to you. So whereas Rose Chris began her distinguished career with the city of Garden City at Lee Richardson Zoo on June 1st, 1993, serving as Secretary 2 and Administrative Secretary before transferring to the Information Technology Department in 2004. And whereas Rose has demonstrated unwavering dedication, hard work, and commitment throughout her 31 years of service, holding various roles including network technician, computer systems analysis analyst, communications and project manager, communications and project assistant manager, IT project, and network systems administrator. And whereas Rose has provided outstanding leadership, significantly contributing to the city's growth and success, all while being a devoted mother and now a proud grandmother. And whereas Rose's exemplary work ethic, positive attitude, and strong connections with colleagues and community members have earned her widespread respect, widespread respect and administration. And whereas Rose Chris will retire from the city of Garden City on October 1st, 2024, after 31 years of service, leaving a legacy as one of Garden City's hardest-working, most dedicated, and most recognizable public servants. Now therefore, I, Manny Ortiz, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2024, as Rose Chris Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to her community, and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities and duties as Network Systems Administrator for the city of Garden City. Signed and sealed this third day of September.
Item 6D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following requests from Jacob Gonzalez, manager at Jack's Tap Kitchen in regards to outdoor concerts in their parking lot at 1907 East Mary Street on three different occasions, September 13th through 15th, September 20th through 22nd, and October 4th through 6th. A waiver to the parking requirements and temporary structure requirements to allow for a tent is requested, as is a waiver to the noise ordinance until 2:00 a.m. on the nights of the 13th, the 19th, and the 4th, or 13th of September, 19th of September, and October 4th.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a very similar request to the request that I think was brought to you in June or July, June. And Jacob is here to answer any of your questions, but they are planning to put up a tent in their parking lot again and have different events coinciding with Community Mexican Fiesta, Fall Fest, and then just another date, I believe. But it is a waiver, as Matt said, for the parking requirements and temporary structure for the tent. And also, this time, they're requesting a noise waiver ordinance till 2:00 a.m. So I guess at the July 16th, the governing body considered the request. They did request till 1:00 a.m. for two outdoor events, and the governing body approved those requests till 12:30 a.m. Per City of Garden City Code Section 62-21, 62-23, noise general restrictions on decibel levels are and prohibited. The city manager has the authority to approve or deny any request to the waiver of the noise ordinance up until 11:00 p.m. And then there's also the Section 1.160 for the zoning regulations, which doesn't allow for the accessory or temporary structures unless they get a waiver from you guys. So alternatives, the governing body may approve the request as presented. You may deny the request, or the governing body may suggest other options. Staff has no recommendations. The special events requests are attached for your review. And like I said, Jacob is here, or if you have any questions of staff, we're here to help.
Yeah, Jacob, I'd love to hear how your July 16th event went and see how that.
Thank you guys for meeting with me. Our July event went, for the most part, well. There was little hiccups just because it's been so long since we've done events. Our timeline, our expenses, um, hey, I forgot we needed this, and we need to make sure you get this. For the most part, I think the event went well, since it's been years. You know, we're talking pre-COVID, so five, six years before our last event. Our biggest issue was we were still having people showing up at 12:15, 12:30, trying to get in, and the event was over. Whatever the reason is, this new Gen Z just doesn't drink like us older folks. They don't come out early. They come out like 11:30 to midnight. And it really hurts us being in the, you know, nightlife industry to try getting those people in. We let them know that we had better specials going on in the morning throughout the day to bring them in. That still just seems not to work. That's why we're shooting for 2:00 a.m. versus a 12:30. It's just because it's still new to everybody in this area since it's been so long. And trying to get them back in the routine isn't going to happen overnight. Did we have good sales? Yes. But was it worth the headache? I could fight on both sides on that, you know. But my goal is to start bringing some kind of form of, hey, you don't have to go outside of Garden City to get these type of events. We can provide those events here. We're hoping not to just provide the events for our local residents, but also our surrounding residents to make sure they're booking hotels, shopping here, eating here. They don't have to just come to my establishment for that. They can go down the street or across town. My goal is to make sure that people are starting to recognize Garden City as some kind of entertainment aspect of instead of, oh, it's just a shopping place. I want them to be known as it's a well-rounded area versus, oh, we only go there to eat. Oh, we only go there to shop. No, you're gonna be able to find everything here. And that's my goal out of everything is not just a one-time-a-month thing is kind of just having events slowly throughout the day. My biggest issue is if I reach out to you guys, say, hey, I want this date, can we lock this in? Then I'm having issues with booking agencies. Hey, that date doesn't work. Does this date work? So, you know, these are big hurdles to overcome, because I'm trying to schedule everything with you guys and also trying to schedule everything with booking agencies. So that's my issue too, is, hey, we can't perform until 10:00 p.m. at night because we're six hours away, eight hours away, and we have to get to you guys. So it's a lot of different obstacles that I wasn't aware of the first go-around, and now it's all being brought to light. Hopefully, this one will run a lot smoother than the last time. We have no issues with sound ordinance. We have no issue with parking. We didn't have any issue of running out of any beer. If anything, I think I overordered. But, you know, it was our first go-around. I didn't know what to expect. So with this go-around, I'm hoping the event goes smoothly. We get no more issues with any of our residents. We didn't have the neighbors calling, hey, you guys need to cut that. So I figured for the most part, things are, people are starting to realize, hey, they're trying to do something. I spread it out this, this time, because the last time I think I did it too close. And then, you know, we had the convention bureau reach out to us to see if we could plan something around Fall Fest. So we do have something going on during the week to give people something else to do when they come down from Main Street. They could stick around the whole day instead of just one, you know, the four or five hours. That Fall Fest is over. I think it starts like at 10:00 and it's over like 4:00 or 5:00. So I'm hoping they'll stay in town all day, is my goal. We've been trying to book people that's for an older crowd, but also trying to get a younger crowd, trying to make sure that we're well-rounded, not just pleasing a certain demographic or audience. Hopefully, I answered all your guys' questions.
Well, I was curious about the 10 o'clock start time. I mean, I think if you explained it, I mean, to me, that, that's, you know, pretty late to start a concert or a or an event. So I was wondering why the 10 o'clock start time, and if you could back it up.
Okay, so the 10 o'clock, we opened the doors at 7:00, started letting everybody in. We maybe had like 20 people in, so we had to push the time back a little bit. So for having, you know, our first act come on at 10:00, it lets all this new Gen Z that doesn't show up till late actually arrive and enjoy the show. Instead of 12:30 and the event's over. So that's my whole goal of starting a little bit later, getting our dinner crowd, making sure my staff is ready for whatever happens that night. If it's slow, we're able to handle it. If it's busy, we're able to handle it. So our service is top-notch. Versus, oh, the service was okay. I don't want people to come to my establishment and say, oh, that place was, oh, it was okay. I want them to enjoy and say, hey, that was phenomenal place. What's your guys' next event?
Yeah, I appreciate the explanation as far as what your challenges are, and it makes sense now that with your bookings and stuff, you have to coordinate, not just on our side, but on their side as well. So any other questions?
Yeah, so is the noise wave ordinance, so it says 13th, so September 13th through 15th, so 13th through 14th, that makes sense?
Yep.
Is this also 13th, 14th, and 15th?
So the only day that we're actually able to book somebody that week would be for the Friday. So that would be the 13th. And that's kind of the challenge that we've been facing, is we're trying to get a week, make sure that everything's locked in. So we, if we're able to book somebody, I have that whole week locked in. I don't have to call you guys up, say, hey, I apologize, is there anything you can do? So I'm trying to make sure I jump ahead of anything, any hoops before oncoming event again, if that makes any sense.
And just, just to keep on track, and then we got a 1:30 hearing, so if we can, I, I mean, I don't want to cut you short, but I I don't know if there's any other questions from the Commission that, that answered your question on.
Yeah.
Mayor, before you all consider a motion, can I ask a clarifying question, Jacob?
Yes, sir.
So there's three windows here, September 13th through 15th, and then night and 20th through 22nd, and then October 4th through 6th. What you're desiring, if I'm understanding you right, is the ability to book a night in each of those windows, not necessarily asking for nine nights.
Yeah.
Yeah, like the 13th through 15th wouldn't be three consecutive nights of 2:00 a.m.
Yeah.
exceeding. You're, you're just looking for the flexibility to work with promoters to get something that weekend, whether it falls on a Friday or Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
But as of right now, the only dates that we're doing events for this go-around will be for the September 13th, which would be the Friday, September 19th, no, September 20th, which would be that Friday, and then September 21st. So the Fall Fest week are those days, and then October 4th for that Friday. So those are the only four days.
So you are looking for two dates in that second window?
Yeah, just the fourth.
Two days in second window.
So this time, I made sure to try moving everything over to Friday and Saturday, so we didn't have the issue, well, you're trying to go till 2:00 a.m. on Thursday when people work on Friday. So that was my goal, was make sure that I stuck to the closest I could to Friday and Saturday.
Any other questions? Do I hear any motions for that? I'll make the motion to approve the request as presented.
So on the, so we're wavering for each of those dates for the, like, September 13th through the 15th for the temporary structure and parking requirements, correct?
So the only real date is gonna be September 13th.
Okay.
And then the following week would be Fall Fest. That's gonna be the 20th, which would be Friday, 21st, which would be Saturday. And then the first week of October would just be October 4th.
Gotcha.
So you want me to clarify that further?
So are you saying for both the, Mayor, are you saying approving both the waiver of the temporary structure and the noise ordinance?
Yes, for the, that 19th, and the 20th and 21st, and then the 4th.
My tendency is towards 1:00 a.m. I think. 2:00 is a little bit too late. Given that, say there's a case that it runs over into Sunday, then it's potential at, someone's up at 1:00 a.m. on Sunday. So that's, or 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, I think, the later it is, it might cause the city to potentially even plan on overstaffing police departments, et cetera. So my tendency is towards 1:00 a.m.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem waiving the temporary structures. It's the noise ordinance that I have a problem with also. I mean, I'm glad the 12:30 worked with no issues or no problems. I understand, and I mean, getting, I don't know, you know, arriving late or not, I don't know if that's.
If we could try 1:00 a.m., I would gladly love to work with that. And then, you know, the next go-around, we can work from there. Like, hey, 1:00 a.m.'s works perfect. Let's keep it like that. My whole thing is, you guys also need to see, like, okay, I shut it off at 12:30, 12:45 to make sure the 1:00 a.m.'s cut down. I'm also gonna have that flux of trying to get all of those patrons from outside inside, dial down the noise. There's also things that might push that a little over till 1:00 a.m. And I hope that you guys understand all that. And we didn't have any issues with PD. I know they came by and checked, they just drove by, fire department came by, made sure everything was in compliance.
Mayor, due to a lack of a second on that motion, I'll make the motion that we waive the parking requirements and temporary structure requirements to allow a tent at this facility during those dates.
Was there, just for a clarified question, the mayor made a motion. Was there, just for a clarified question, the mayor made a motion and then it immediately started into conversation without, and really an opportunity. So I think it would be probably appropriate to allow there to be some space for somebody to make a second at this point. And then if not, then I think you'd be in the position to make another motion.
Yeah. So I think, so it's been approved.
There was no break after your, there was immediately discussion.
There's been a motion to approve one, two, till the, as requested. Was there a second? With no second, that motion dies. Second motion. Other option, which?
Well, I like the taking up the temporary structure and using that. And then let's talk about the, the noise ordinance.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we waive the parking requirements and temporary structure requirements and allow for a tent on those specified dates.
Second.
Is this a motion that does not consider at all the waiver for noise wave, the noise wave ordinance?
No.
I mean, I think we can take it out of this.
Is there a plan to consider that after this?
We can take it out.
Take it up.
This way, you can take it after this, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass. Okay. Thank you, Jacob.
Is it necessary to state that we will consider the item number two of this, the issue number two of this after the 1:30 meeting?
After the public hearing?
Yep. Okay.
We'll come back to it. So right now, we'll just move on to the 1:30 public hearing, and that is item...
Item 10A is a 1:30 scheduled public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate and the approval of the 2025 budget. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And if approved, it would be Resolution 3120-2024.
Go ahead and open a public hearing.
At the July 2nd, 2024 City Commission meeting, the governing body authorized the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent to exceed their calculated revenue neutral rate. The 2025 city budget was approved for publication at the August 6, 2024 meeting with a 38.492 mill levy rate. The revenue neutral rate for 2025 is 36.033 mill levy rate. This resolution formally acknowledges that the city is exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So following the commentary on public hearing, the alternatives for the governing body are that they may approve the resolution as presented. Approval must be completed by a roll call vote, or the governing body may not approve the resolution and lower the city's mill levy to equal the revenue neutral rate. And the recommendation from staff is that the governing body approve the resolution as presented.
If there's anyone that would like to come up and make any comments, they should do so now, and please state your name for the record.
Oh, name's Ernie Orner. I'm here to discuss the levy increases that you're proposing. All right, so due to past retained sales property taxes still increased, the city is looking at increasing taxes by 6.48% above revenue neutral for my taxes I'm paying you guys for the city. The total property tax again is approaching $7,000. On the current trend, my taxes were past $7,000 in 2025. This is above the value, this is after the value of my house decreased by $20,000. The value of my house decreased, but my taxes are still increasing. On standard catch of 20, and a catch 22, in that budget for 40,000 per cent city on the backs of 30,000, with most being below the second income distribution curve. Apes and students that go to the USC 4F7 are low income, low, low income housing. Be rich, can afford to leave town, but don't have any issue paying your sales tax because it's still lower than what you could charge for property tax. According to Zillow, Garden City is now a heavy buyer's market with houses being discounted. Old Scott City liberal, Deerfield, Summerville, this is heavy seller's market. Four, the city's portion of my property tax would be 1,0581.75 for next year. City's portion of sales tax rate is 1.2%. I would have to spend 137,000 and change a year in Garden to equal the same amount of property taxes I pay for the city. Does not include the college taxes of 1202 USC 4F7, which is 1,882.15 a year. That almost sounds like still to me, if you can afford to move to a lower cost living town around Garden, you don't charge enough sales tax. People that live outside Garden, by any increase in sales tax you charge outside Garden affects those people living in Garden. Four, towns around Garden have a higher levy mill, but their taxes are still lower because their median house prices are lower. According to Zillow, median house price in Garden is 275,000, median household income is 67,500. This means a person's typical profit tax in Garden is around 5.8% to 7.62% of their gross income where both spouses are working. You start to add in sales tax, including special taxing zones, total non-income tax base, taxes become 14.74%. Add in wages, wage tax that typical household is paying, 32.14% of all taxes. Mortgage tax, less people get to spend on good and services to even live. County prop tax will be worse going forward, either fix, either fix a jail or build a new one. Last year, it's all good, man. Begging the county why they're increasing its taxes because you can't afford a washing machine. The coconut money is gone. According to Federal Reserve, over the last two years, savings rates have been the lowest since then, 2008 at 2.9%. It's usually around five. The typical American is funding their lifestyle on debt currently and it's running out the clock. That's why the Fed's looking at lowering interest rates here in another few weeks. This year, Tyson is looking at employing 42,000 refugees at 1650 an hour with benefits in New York State. Tyson asked, starting pay here is around 2250 according to the asset for movie theaters. What happens for your product tax and sales tax revenue when Tyson National Beef start driving down wages to maintain profitability? My understanding is this year is the first time Tyson lost money. I'm gonna start paying attention to what the market will bear on taxes. I'm gonna start looking at what are wants versus needs and start funding, stop funding wants and set aside money for needs because again, it'll only be more expensive next year. Thank you.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Ernie Orner.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Gestensleger. I live on Susan Street. My home was increased by $27,730 this year. It's well above what it's worth. I can't see this kind of increase on my property. I'm retired. I got pretty much on fixed income. I own my home. I don't owe any money. Cars, nothing. And it's putting a strain on us, just the two of us, my wife and I. And if it keeps at the certain rate, keeps going, I'm going to spend $120,000 in 10 years to live in that home that I own. That doesn't, you know, when you increase it like that, my insurance goes up. Everything goes up. I don't know how long we're going to last there. Depends on a lot of things, medical conditions, whatever. I'm almost 75 years old. I really don't want to go back to work, but I guess I will if I have to live here. But there's 144 million homes in this country. And today, there's 37% of them, 90 days lapse on paying their mortgage. And their taxes, because everything's so high. So I'm asking to reduce what you can to help all the property owners, just not here. It'll help everywhere. And they all use the D.C.A.D. to make the adjustment on your property, which is really actually fraudulent in many respects. What I'm doing now is paying taxes on unrealized gains. And that's exactly what it is. And they're not going by the U.S. Code of Appraisals. U.S.P.A.P., U.P.A.T. I don't know if you've ever heard of before. But by doing this, you're violating the Constitution of the United States. You don't have increases like this. If you went with the uniform standards of appraisal practices, you would never have these kind of increases. We don't have a money problem. We've got a spending problem. And I know all of you are probably well aware of what's going on, but you're going to lose a lot of property owners in this community. Where's your money coming from? It's not. It's going to do, it's going to keep going down. Who wants to come by my house at that kind of appraisal? They're not. They can't afford it. They're having a hard time. Just keep paying their bills. I mean, it's just completely out of hand. And I know inflation has a lot to do with it, but this is part of the inflation, a big part of it, because people can't pay their taxes. And in two different counties in Missouri, the courts ruled that the county and the city's got to pay back the landlords. That's what it come down to. And you don't want to go there. I don't want to go there. Nobody does. And they don't have the money. I don't know how that's going to turn out. They're trying to appeal it, but I doubt they're going to get anywhere because they broke too many laws, state, federal laws and the constitution. That's where it went. They have a real problem all over the United States. It's just not here. It's everywhere. And the D.C.A.D. is the one that's causing a problem. But I don't know if you guys even know what I'm talking about. Anybody know what the D.C.A.D. is? You know what Uniform Code of Appraisals? You're the ones that are making the decision to how much money you want. You need to look into that. Because in Texas, a big one's coming down. I've got one, four of them, or three of them, the fourth one's going down, and they're in trouble. And some of these are 20-year terms in prison. I'm not trying to scare you or threaten you or anything, but that is the U.S. Code. It just doesn't reflect from the appraisers. I don't know if they're aware, but we're all, they've just been trained to use the D.C.A.D. It's the same thing going on with Zillow. Oh, that's what it's worth. But it's not. There's no way anybody's going to go in there and buy my house. I bought it too high, but I have the money. I haven't had a mortgage for 45 years, even car payments. If I don't have the money, I don't pay for it. I pay for it, but I don't get it. Now I'm being persecuted for my due diligence. And that's not right, is it? Doesn't anybody have the kind of money you can come up with and do that? It costs me about $1,200 a month to live in my own house that I own if we're ever buy anything. Kind of ridiculous, isn't it? And it went from 396,200 to 423,930. Who's going to buy that house? I can't sell it. Who's going to open my door? It's too high, isn't it? So what are we going to do about it? Just not me. I'm just one person. There's a lot of people out there that would come like, talk, better food than lunch, because there'd be a lot of them, but they don't have the time. They got kids, they got this and that, and a credit card, they're living on credit cards. It's ridiculous. And a lot of them paid their property taxes on a credit card, but they can't pay it back. That can't give them more credit. It's just not here. It's everywhere. But it has to stay here locally and try to bring it down to a point where people can afford to live here. I moved back last year, 30th of June, I took possession of that home. And the taxes I paid then to what I did now is just beyond my belief. I didn't improve. I didn't do anything. Nothing. In a city, they do a good job, trash, everything, all the amenities. It's a wonderful thing. But there's places to cut, and there is. You just got to get down to brass tacks. What can we do? I left here in 1967, and I come back a year ago. And has it changed? And we're to a good, good point. I mean, we've got places to shop and all that. That's fine. But when our purchasing power goes down and we're just doing essentials, those businesses are going to hurt. They'll close, and they're closing all over the country because of it. And then the crime rate gets worse. And you know what happened in the other cities? It's just not the big cities. It's coming locally. So what do you do? If you can't afford it, you're going to try to steal it. Am I correct? Survival of the fittest. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, sir, can I get you to say your last name again, please?
Steven Gestensleger.
Can you spell that?
My wife read this. Four syllables. G. S. T. N. S. L. A. G. E. R. That's the way my kids start at school.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Lawrence Green, a 15 price. And I'm here to oppose the property tax above the neutral rate. I'm just here to speak from my heart to your hearts and your consciences. It's no secret that housing rates in Garden City are unaffordable. And that's not due to any of us here, supply and demand. I'd hate to be a young child starting out in these days and elderly. I'll be honest, I can still afford my taxes, but I fight them every year. I've won most of them. The way they do it is not fair. I can show you and have friends who have smaller houses and pay more taxes on their houses than their friends and neighbors who have larger houses. It's not right. And at the previous meeting, after the public comments were closed, the commissioners had made their rebuttals. And one of the comments was, it takes so much to run the county. I know it takes so much to run the city. And if you guys really understand that in your hearts and your consciences, you people are homeowners too. It takes so much to run a household. We just can't raise taxes. I'm not asking you to cut the taxes. I'm just asking, don't go beyond the neutral rate. Don't be greedy. We as a...
We, as a homeowner, we have to cut. I quit eating chips when it got to $3 a bag. And I'll cut other places. But you know what? That cuts into the sales tax, cuts into your budget. You keep raising taxes, it's going to get to the point where the elderly won't be able to afford their homes. They'll have to move out. We can see that happening in California, Colorado, other places. And you guys here, it's got to stop somewhere. I'm not asking you to not cut taxes beyond, below the neutral rate. It does take money to run a city and a household. But just don't get greedy. Don't go beyond. And I speak from my heart to your hearts and conscience. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on and close the public comment. Open it up to commissioners' questions.
I don't have any questions, but I do need to say that, a point of clarification, that we are not increasing the mill levy for the town. And this is, the revenue rate is decided at the state level, sorry, is jurisdiction that states how much money, sorry, what is the mill levy to regain the same amount of property taxes the year before. So even if we reduce the mill levy, you're going to see an increase be based upon the valuations of your homes. I do want to also clarify a comment about the unrealized gains being non-constitutional, which I agree unrealized gains would be awful. However, we are using our homes, so therefore it is a utility. We're using it at the moment. And a good case for us to look at is, I think it's the Moore versus United States. That has shown that unrealized gains, property taxes are not unrealized gains. But again, to clarify that, the appraisers face jurisdiction from, at the state level also. So it's very difficult. But to clarify, we are not raising the mill levy for the city.
I appreciate people speaking up. I mean, this is the first time in seven years on the commission that anyone has ever come, has come and spoke before the commission concerning any type of budget issue, especially at this time. And so, I mean, I know that there was a lot of work done to bring the rate down to level there from what we were doing last year. As far as the appraised values, I know those have went up. And I really appreciate, you know, those, making those points. And I, like I said, I think coming and speaking publicly about these things are the only really, the way to change that. There are lots of factors. I really appreciate you, you know, again, it's not just the city, but it's a lot of combination of those factors. And I do agree. I mean, it's hard for young people to find homes and to live here in Garden City. Hopefully, our wages, our wages are increasing. I know that a lot of the, a lot of the things that we're trying to do here is to make sure that this city is still viable in the future. So I do appreciate your comments, and they are taken in consideration.
I just want to say thank you for coming here and speaking. This is one of the best ways for your voice to be heard is coming to the commission and speaking to us. So I just want to say thank you for that. I just also want to say that your voices are heard by the commission. We are very much taking what you say into consideration when doing this. Also, just want to repeat what Tom said regarding this mill levy is the same mill levy as previous years. It's just that the revenue neutral rate, which is set, is different, which is the total aggregate amount of property tax coming in. And then it's lowered down to a mill levy rate. But I know this budget year for us was indeed very hard. And I know it's also very hard for you guys as well. So I want you to know that we did take time and consideration in preparing this year's budget because we know that what you guys are going through as well is very difficult. So, thank you.
Okay.
One more comment to make, sorry. Go ahead.
The, our mill levy rate, and I get where you're coming from. I'm a homeowner as well, and I see the increased evaluation to my home. We've kept the mill levy flat for over 10 years for the city and have not increased it. It's actually gone down by over half a mil since I've been on the commission. And this year, it was, you know, we cut almost $700,000 out of the budget just to get to a flat mill levy rate. Plus, the department's cut quite a bit out of their budget to get to the point of where we got it in front of us to cut even more. So, and I, and I understand. I, I see the increases as well. We're one of four taxing entities in this community. So and as a governing body, our, our mission is to set a budget to help our community maintain what we have in our community and help it to grow and all of us prosper together. And, and I, I feel, I feel your pain as well. I mean, I write the check out when I get, when I get that bill in the mail too. And I kind of have, it's, I mean, it's like one of the people said, they bought their house for a lot higher rate than what they should have. But, I mean, that's, that's where we're at in our community. I mean, people are selling their homes a lot higher than what they're assessed for. And they're getting that in this community. And I know we have a goal as a commission to try to increase the housing units in our community to help alleviate some of that pressure that we have in our community. But I would also like to thank everyone that came forward and, and spoke.
Yeah, thank you for coming forward. At my, at my home, my mother works at Tyson, and she's the only person that works. My dad had a stroke, so no one else works. So this is a really big pressure for my mother, right? So we, we face that and feel that. So thank you for bringing that, but also to recognize that it is really a supply and demand at, at some point. And hopefully, as we can build more homes, the valuations of the house kind of tapers off to where it's manageable for all of us.
I did want to say we're glad you moved back, Mr. Gestenslager. That's kind of neat that from 1967, there is a huge change from 1967 to 2020, 2023. So, I mean, it's, I mean, and Garden City has really prospered. I mean, I think that we've pointed out that our mill levy, as far as surrounding communities, we've really kept that low as far as, and kept it level for the last 10 years now or more. So, but I really appreciate you living and staying here. And hopefully, as I said, as we, as we grow together as Garden City and then increase that, our housing, hopefully, that's going to bring down the cost of those housings and make it more affordable for everybody. So, thank you.
And I think just kind of in closing, for all the remarks and all the people that came, and I appreciate the humbled heart conversation. That's, I mean, as a commission up here, we are you, and you are us. We're your voice as well. So we've listened to both sides. We've listened to staff and got it down. Like Commissioner Cessna had mentioned, staff has cut things out of their budget, and it's gone from a significant number that would have been an increase of 16-point mill levy to keeping it flat. So there has been discussions in the previous meetings. If you want to go back and watch any of those meetings or online to kind of hear those discussions as well. It is, it's not only the city's taxes that increase our community rates. It's also county, school districts, and state. So we've got other players in the game. But we've done our best, I feel, for our city department to, to make that, make that cut and be respectful for you in the community. So we appreciate the comments. As that ends, I think we need to go ahead and vote and approve this. And then we'll have a roll call by the city clerk of each individual, yea or nay vote.
Make motion.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I, I closed, I closed the public hearing. So, so now it'd be time for a vote.
Do we need to make a motion on that? Yeah. May I move, we approve the resolution as presented?
I'll second that we approve Resolution 3120-2024.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I will go in alphabetical order by last name for commissioners. Commissioner Cessna.
Aye.
Commissioner Langraff.
Aye.
Commissioner Wen.
Aye.
Commissioner, Mayor Ortiz.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passed 5-0.
The actual budget will be later in the meeting, mayor. If we'd like to go back to item 6D, and you take up, you're in a position to take up the second request on Mr. Gonzalez's Jack's Tap Kitchen request to waive the noise ordinance until 2:00 a.m. on the dates listed. And just a reminder for the group, at this point, that stands to be 9/13, 9/20, 9/21, and 10/4.
May I move, we waive the noise ordinance until 1:00 a.m. for those three sets of dates?
And those are all Fridays, just to clarify?
The 21st would be a Saturday. The 20th would be a Friday. There's two dates in that window.
Oh, okay.
September 13th, October 20th, 21st. Sorry, September 13th, September 20th, and September 21st, and October 4th.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passed 4-1.
I would appreciate you coming back and letting us know how they would go. So, your considerations.
Item 6E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from the Garden City Fire Department Personnel to waive Code Section 6215 unlawful solicitation to allow the department personnel to collect donations for the Muscular Dystrophy Association Fill the Boot Drive on September 21st, 2024, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Mayor, Commissioners, I join you with Chief Ursick in this request. This is their annual MDA boot block. I do believe it is the same locations, which would be Kansas Avenue, Fleming, Walmart Supercenter, or Walmart Superstore, Schulman Crossing Shopping Center. And then they will also be at Fall Fest. And just as an added note, they'll also be in Holcomb, but that is outside of our district. It will be in Holcomb.
Correction, Holcomb will be the desk.
Oh, Holcomb will be here. So this is similar to the previous request. But there is, it requires waiver Code Section 62-15, which is unlawful solicitation. Your alternatives are you may approve to waive Code Section 62-15 unlawful solicitation for the date of September 21st from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Or you may deny the request. Staff recommends approval of this waiver.
Mayor, I make the motion we approve the request for the waiver as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Item 6F, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Arlene Clark with Peddler's Market to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have a banner placed on the Fleming Street and Mary Street fence at the northwest corner of Stevens Park from October 21st through 28th, 2024, for the Peddler's Market event.
Mayor, Commissioners, this probably is familiar. They came, Peddler's Market was before you at the last commission meeting. And we approved, I believe, two locations. And one location we did not approve, which was Kansas Avenue. And so I spoke with Arlene Clark, who's actually here from Peddler's Market. And she would like to request the use of Fleming Street and Mary Street fence. And then also the northwest corner of Stevens Park from October 21st to 28th for Peddler's Market event. And, which is the 27th? 26th and 27th. This is similar to special science, special event sign waivers in the past. The governing body may approve this request, or you may deny this request. Staff has no recommendation. And Arlene, if you'd like to come up, you can, if you'd like.
And we've done this, we've done this before.
Yes.
And I'm bragging you. This is what will be my, okay. This is what my banners will look like. From Park, Fleming and Mary. And I don't, I need the Stevens Park.
You said Stevens Park.
Measurements. Because I don't think these will fit. This is three by eight. And I believe, I don't know what you told me.
Three by eight, three by eight will work at the fence, obviously. And then I believe it's four by six.
Four by six, okay.
Yeah, but we can.
At Stevens Park, yes. Yeah, Stevens Park. And then your denial, I'm asking you, from Fleming to campus on Kansas Avenue. People compliment that they see these when they come to town. At the event, people notice these. So if you think about that, please.
On the fence at Mary and Fleming, is that city's fence?
Yeah, that's, is the Recreation Commission?
Well, there's no Recreation Commission anymore. That's part of the city of Garden City. We have, we operate the park there, but it's the school district's fence. We, the, the request is still appropriate. We just don't have the authority to tell you. We can from a code perspective, it's just not our property. So that request, I think, I still think it's appropriate that the commission could take that up. But it sounds to me like for that fence, you'd also need to make sure that was okay with USD 457 before you hung that, that fence. We do operate a lot of rec programming on that field. So the confusions by all of us is, is understood. But technically, that's USD 457 property.
And we have worked with, we have worked with the school district and the principal for that school to let them know when their assigned requests to be done.
But I still need to contact 457. Thank you, Chairman. And Commissioners.
I move that we approve the request to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to place the banners on Fleming Street, Mary Street fence. With her approval from the school district, the northwest corner of Stevens Park from October 21st to 28th, 2024, for the Peddler's Market event.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Thanks, Mayor.
Item 6G, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Downtown Vision, Inc. to waive the sign ordinance and right-of-way restrictions to have a banner placed at the southwest corner of Stevens Park from November 24th through December 14th for the various holiday events in the downtown area.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is similar to previous requests. Downtown Vision has a whole collection or series of events that happens during the holidays, which would include the lighting of the tree, the parade, and tuba Christmas. So they wanted to have a sign up. So theirs is actually set for two weeks, which we were trying to go with one week. But since there was multiple events on the one side, we thought it would be appropriate to have for two weeks for the downtown area. This would be the southwest corner of Stevens Park. And that is a station that normally Downtown Vision does utilize for their events. Again, this is similar to special event sign requests in the past. The governing body, you may choose to waive that sign ordinance and the right-of-way restrictions, or you may deny the request. Staff has no recommendation.
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the, a request to waive the sign ordinance as presented. I second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Items seven A and seven B are staff reports. You have any questions or comments on those? Now's the appropriate time. We've taken care of the meetings of note. We've also taken care of the appropriation ordinance, so we're, and we've taken care of the ten-thirty public hearing and resolution consideration under ten A. So I've got us at ten B, that's right?
Yes.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the standard traffic ordinance for 2024. Mr. Dummermuth? If approved after this presentation, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine ninety-dash-2024.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. This is the time when we look at the annual changes to the standard traffic ordinance. There were not a lot of substantive changes this year, except for what you've seen in the memo regarding what happens when somebody doesn't take care of their traffic ticket. I do want to stress that that only applies to traffic tickets. It does not apply to our numerous other offenses that happen, and they're automatically set for court. So, just jumping back really quick, in the memo, it outlines that there's some changes to the violations regarding, like neon ground effects underneath certain vehicles. There's also some exemptions that were added for the violation of spilling loads on highways. There is some exceptions for cotton balers, as you'll see. We really adopted everything that the STO, the League of Kansas Municipalities, proposed for this year. We did, however, slightly modify the, the new requirements passed by the state legislature regarding what happens to people when they don't take care of their traffic tickets. So, previously, you can, like, if somebody doesn't take care of their traffic ticket, one of the consequences is your license gets suspended. Our court, however, really doesn't have any control over actually suspending the license. We send that to the state of Kansas, and they handle the suspension. There's a lot of new provisions in there now that allow a person to apply for a restricted driver's license, rather than a suspension because you can't drive when your license is suspended. Otherwise, you could get arrested, and there's a whole slew of other problems that causes. So, there's a new push on the state side, Kansas legislature side, to make that easier for people. So, you'll see a lot of these people able to apply for restricted driver's licenses. How it affects municipal court, though, is that prior to the court telling the state that, hey, look, we have somebody who didn't pay their ticket, we want you to suspend them, or give them a restricted license, there are some things that the court's supposed to take into consideration. What we did with the proposed ordinance is that we kind of put that onus a little bit back on the person to make that request, to say, and the request involves reducing the fines, reducing the court costs, or coming up with an alternative means to kind of take some responsibility. There might be some people who don't have any financial means. They might want to ask for some community service, or some other type of an option. What the proposed ordinance does is when we send out the notices to people saying, hey, you did not pay your ticket, you have thirty days to either pay it, set it for court, where you can talk to the judge one-on-one, or you can have those two new options. You know, ask for reduction in fine, or ask for some type of alternative measure, alternative requirement. They have thirty days to do that. So if they do, then the court can consider it. And, you know, if they don't comply with that, or if they don't do anything, we can still ask the state to suspend them or restrict them. That's the main change that you will see this year. We feel that the proposed ordinance kind of strikes a good balance. Does anyone have any questions?
So, when they're notified about this going to be happening, is, are they always notified by mail only?
Yes, they are, yes.
Yeah, because I know that with the, with the post, you know, with postal service, that can sometimes be an issue, especially with people moving or not changing their address for their license, or. And I'm wondering if there's a way to include a provision, and I'm not saying we have to do it this time, but where text notifications are also something that we provide? Because almost everyone has a cellphone, no matter what income bracket you are, and cellphone texts seem to be more answered or more paid attention to than, you know, the US Post Office. So I think sometimes we're missing a lot of these people because they're not receiving their mail, or they get the mail at the wrong address, and people just order it rather than saying they don't live at this address.
Yeah, that certainly would not be precluded by statute. I do know that, that you, the municipal court did just get a new system, and it does have some of those capabilities as it relates to court hearings. I don't know if that is something they can look into to see if they can kind of incorporate that text notification on a wider scale. I do know that the municipal court does try to modernize that notice as much as they can.
Right.
Sometimes it's just a little bit of, I guess, logistical thing to figure out. I think right now they're trying to work, get familiarized with the new system. I know Jennifer, Mrs. Cunningham and I certainly are trying to do that as well, but that's certainly something we can bring up to the court administrator, Cynthia, too.
Yeah, it's just a suggestion, and knowing that with mailing and issues with post office and getting mail in a timely manner, or even to the correct address. You know, sometimes when people move the address on your license, you don't realize that you've actually moved. So, that was just a suggestion, but.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor, I make the motion, we approve ordinance twenty-nine ninety-dash-2024.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Item ten C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Uniform Public Offense Code for 2024. And if approved, this would be ordinance number twenty-nine ninety-one dash-2024.
Thank you. Same for this year. This is the non-traffic offenses. We're dealing with things like theft, interference, law enforcement, domestic battery, more of your standard, traditional criminal-type offenses. The league this year had a few key, like, really just two changes. And one of them is something that Chief Pruitt in the city attorney's office has already discussed and incorporated. Specifically, there were, used to be three or four different ways that you could charge someone with disorderly conduct. One of those was loud and noisy conduct. That was probably the most traditional, the most, the, the type of disorderly conduct the police saw the most problem of. You know, whether they're at a Garden City wind game, and there's some type of disruption, or somebody's in an argument outside of their house, and somebody, there's a possibility they'll get arrested or cited with loud and noisy conduct. The Kansas Supreme Court, however, found that that particular part of the ordinance was unconstitutionally vague, meaning that it would, sorry, overbroad, not vague, unconstitutionally overbroad, that it applied to some types of conduct that was protected free speech, and some types of conduct that, you know, you could rightfully charge somebody criminally for engaging in. So because it kind of blended those two things a little bit too much, the Kansas Supreme Court said that you cannot charge that. And, and so what happened is they took that one part out of the statute, also out of the UPOC, and that's, that's, we obviously had to follow suit with that. There are still the other traditional ways of charging somebody with disorderly conduct, if they come in and disrupt some type of assembly. So, but the police have already been aware of that, and we've already worked through it. The second one is there's a medical assistance immunity. So, if it protects people, it gives them an immunity from charges like possession of marijuana, possession of drug paraphernalia, possession of controlled substances. This is another state law change that just kind of followed through with the UPOC, followed through with our proposals as well. The, it, it's to protect people who are seeking medical assistance and are really initiating law enforcement contact for that reason. It would not apply in situations where an officer stops a vehicle, detects an odor of marijuana, conducts a search, finds that there is possession of marijuana, and somebody in the car remembers that this is an immunity, and says, hey, look, I need medical assistance now. The cop, the, the police, sorry, the police would still be allowed to proceed as usual with that situation. But it protects people who might be at their home and be suffering from some type of an episode. They contact the police, or they contact 911, and everybody responds. They are, under state law, given an immunity to actual drug possession in those situations. The exception to it is, of course, if they have several pounds of, you know, controlled substance, and the police say this looks like distribution, that immunity wouldn't apply. It's, it's really applying to that personal possession type of situations where, where somebody really is having some type of a medical issue. There is a little bit of precedence to this. The state had added this several years ago. I think it was about four or five years ago to the crime of minor inconsumption of alcohol. They didn't want people who were, you know, in a, you know, in a bad situation because of their intoxication, like, friends being worried about calling the police, and something bad happening. So, they, they had a similar immunity, which really is very, it kind of follows the same structure as this one, but that's, that's what that is doing. Does anybody have any questions on either of those?
So as far as, like, the age, is there any age restriction? I mean, you mean, are we going to have ten, fifteen-year-olds? Or is it just, is there an age restriction on this? Or is it just possession of marijuana, drug paraphernalia, and all those others? Does it matter the age of the person? Or is it, are they precluded from being? That's the only thing I couldn't really figure out. I mean, is it, you know, so you have someone called her a resident, you find children there with controlled substances like this, so.
Yeah, so there is no age restriction on this one. And a lot of that is because anything for possession of marijuana, there is that state law side of it, so.
So then that would supersede it?
Oh, yes. So, we do have to follow the state law in this regard. But I think the reason why it doesn't have any type of an age restriction is because all, under the age of eighteen, these types of offenses are going to be handled as, under the Juvenile Justice Code. So they're going to be sent to the county attorney's office. They're going to be dealt with in a certain way anyways. So, really, this kind of only applies to people who are eighteen and older.
No, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve ordinance twenty-nine ninety-one dash-2024.
Hey, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the authorization of the 2025 budget certificate, which summarizes the maximum levy of property tax for specific funds and the maximum expenditure for all funds of the city's budget. Jared.
Good afternoon again. The certificate for the 2025 budget was prepared using the notice of hearing for the 2025 budget expenditures. Prior to approving the budget certificate, the governing body approved a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. This allows the city to levy a property tax rate of thirty-eight point four-two mils that will generate approximately eleven million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. The governing body may approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented. The governing body may approve and sign a certificate of budget that is different from what is presented. However, Kansas statutes prohibit the changes resulting in raising the city's total levy from what was published on the notice of public hearing, and the governing body may not approve a certificate of budget. Staff's recommendation is approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented. And so at this point, you can come anywhere, down from the rate that you published, go below the revenue rate, even if you pass the resolution indicating you were intending to exceed the revenue rate, you really still have kind of everything on the table in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I just want to say thank you. I know a lot of work went into this year's budget. I mean, I know the departments made several hard decisions. I know we, as commissioners, worked really well together to make decisions. So I just appreciate all the work on the budget this year.
Thank you.
May I move, we approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for proposal to provide a temporary facility for the Garden City Police Department during the renovation and/or refurbishment of the existing law enforcement center. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is a request for consideration and approval to release a request for proposal to provide temporary facilities for the Garden City Police Department during renovation and/or refurbishment of the existing law enforcement center. In previous meetings, staff has documented the multi-year history of water and sewer leaks throughout the LEC, the frequency of inoperable restroom and locker room facilities, the unreliability of heating and air conditioning, and the chronic foul odor present in the building produced both by failed restroom facilities on the primary levels and sewage leaking from the jail into office space. The documentation of the deteriorating conditions in which first responders and support staff have worked is in, also reflect the untimeliness of responses to requests for maintenance, leading staff to make the recommendation to the governing body to consider an alternate site for temporary housing of GCPD operations until such time as Finney County assesses and addresses the state of the LEC. In June of this year, the governing body approved providing written notice to Finney County to terminate the use of the space at the LEC, allowing time to identify a temporary, or a temporary facility or facilities for GCPD administration, operations, and emergency communication services. With notice being provided today, the city will have to identify alternative space by September 2025 and furnish and equip that space to meet the short-term needs of the Garden City Police Department, while also providing a more conducive working environment. As the city looks to identify and finalize interim space, the police department will continue ensuring the Finney County Sheriff's Office is involved with discussions and finding ways to work together to best serve our community. Staff has requested a request for proposal, which is attached and outlines the scope of work, timeframe of project, and minimum qualifications of prospective vendors in providing a temporary facility or facilities for the GCPD. The GCPD is looking for a minimum of twelve thousand square feet for daily operations, parking for a minimum of thirty vehicles, and the ability to have access, control, twenty-four-seven for operations and security. The city desires the facility to be ready for the police department to move in on or before September twelfth of 2025. Alternatives you have before you. You may approve the release of this request for proposal for temporary facility or facilities for the police department, or you may deny the request for the police department to release this and provide further direction. Our recommendation is to approve the request to release the request for proposals for temporary facility or facilities for the police department and police operations. And further, the fiscal note, or the current cost of this is unknown, but we will be presenting to the governing body once an alternative space or spaces have been identified. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So my question's not about the need, because I think the need has been evident, and it's been shown time and time again. So my question is this idea of when, as far as the review of the request for proposals, and how that's going to work, is it going to be a, a group of people, or a team of people? And I mean, I would encourage you also to include one of the commissioners up on that, on that review. I mean, I would recommend the mayor with his background, but I didn't know how that was going to work. And so that's the one point I'd like to just clarify before.
I think I can say that you absolutely will have a working group. I just don't know what the makeup of that's going to look like, but it will actually include somebody from the area.
The thirty vehicles, I just, I'd never realized that, that we had that many vehicles. Yeah, that, I mean, I know that's going to complicate, but, so there's very few, but I mean.
If you think of both the operational vehicles and then staff vehicles, everybody drives to work. Not staff, like our staff, but their personal vehicles.
Right, right, right. Well, the dispatch being moved in also, that's my last question, I'm sorry, so.
Yes, we have an, we have an alternative plan for them right now that we're still.
Okay.
We're not so the details.
Because I know that's all the technical and all the, that's, I know it's another, another something that has to be sorted out, so I didn't know how that was. another something that has to be sorted out, so I didn't know how that was.
Very much so. Infrastructure is going to be very, very important on that, so it will also probably be an update at a later time for you guys, but yes.
I would just kind of ask if there was a diamond in the rough here that you could move in readily into a building, could you, as soon as it's done? Or, I mean, I'm just saying that, could, say this happens in March of next year and that building's ready, could you move out into that building at that point? Or do you have to wait till the September 1st? Okay.
I don't have to wait, and with the staff that I have, I can probably move mountains for you.
Just a diamond in the rough is the trick.
So there's no requirement of a 30-day notice or a 60-day vacate notice or anything like that?
We've, we've sent notice over today, the formal notice for the old agreement.
Right.
So it's sort of a, we have, you know, we'll still occupy, and the intent is to work out a, a temporary agreement and not just walk out on the, on Finney County. We understand that there is, that agreement is intertwined with so many other things, us providing dispatch services, them providing jail services. It's not just a space facility. So we've got to work out some temporary agreement anyways, and in that temporary agreement, we can, you know, perhaps build in some flexibility, but I think at this point in time, as soon as, anytime before September 25th, if it was Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, we, yeah, move in Friday, but, yeah, I think it's, you know, we can, the, the committee that looks at it and makes a recommendation, and then the commission as a whole, once you get it, can take in, that's the difference between a bid and a RFP, you can take in a number of different factors.
I move that we approve the request proposal for the temporary facility for the police department.
A second.
Case been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve submitting a Kansas Department of Transportation Fall 2024 Cost Share Program application for traffic control equipment upgrades in the amount of $554,986. Tyler.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The Kansas Department of Transportation Fall 2024 Cost Share Program provides financial assistance to local entities for transportation projects that improve safety, support job retention and growth, improve access or mobility, relieve congestion, and help areas across the state improve the transportation system. The Cost Share Program is one of KDOT's most flexible funding opportunities for communities. It also allows communities to apply for assistance with a wide range of highway, local road, bridge, rail, airport, bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit projects. KDOT will fund approved Cost Share projects up to $1 million, as long as the local community can provide up to 15% local cash match. City of Garden City has 38 traffic-controlled intersections that is responsible for maintaining, and staff along with PEC Engineering and GATI's Traffic has identified numerous traffic control equipment throughout the city that is needing updated. The estimated cost for the upgrades is $544,000, $554,986. And staff believes that if the governing body authorizes staff to apply for the grant, and if the grant is to be awarded, Garden City would greatly speed up the required improvements to the traffic control system. If the governing body authorized staff to apply for the 2024 KDOT Cost Share, Fall Cost Share Program application, it must be submitted by September 19th, 2024. And once we do submit that, we would get notification from KDOT if we're awarded or not by the end of November of this year, so. Two alternatives before you. One, the governing body may choose to authorize staff to submit a Kansas Department of Transportation Fall 2024 Cost Share Program application, the traffic control equipment upgrades in the amount of $554,986. Two, the governing body may choose not to apply for the 2024 KDOT Cost Share Program. Recommendation is, staff recommends the governing body authorize staff to submit a 2024 Cost Share Program application for the traffic control equipment and upgrades in the amount of $554,986. Fiscal note here is, if awarded the Cost Share Grant, the funding would come from the General Fund Street Division Maintenance Traffic Signal GL. That's the 10041421-5446 account, and the 2025 budget includes $80,000 for the city, city's portion of the Cost Share Grant for the replacement of the traffic control equipment needed to be updated. If the city has not awarded the grant, we would still put budgeted funds to replace as many of the outdated conflict monitors at the different locations as possible, so. I'll have to answer any questions you may have.
Tyler, I think this is a good opportunity for the grant to go towards. Do you anticipate anything as far as getting replaced? Or does this have all been vetted out to just do a replacement one-to-one with control panels?
Well, with the 38 that we have, we still have about 32 that we need to get these conflict monitors replaced with. So we're looking at, you know, some of the other equipment that has to do with this is like battery backup systems, the actual controller along with the conflict monitors. So it would kind of be an intersection-by-intersection basis on what we haven't already replaced versus what we still need to.
Okay.
That answers your question, though.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Any other questions? No, I think this is a great opportunity, so.
Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the staff to submit the KDOT 24 Cost Share Program application for the upgrades.
Second.
Case been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 12D is an executive session, and we don't anticipate action being needed after that executive session, so if you'd like to consider the consent agenda item, we can move on to that. If approved, it would be consent agenda items 13A through 13E.
Do you want to say that I'm excited to see at least agreement out at the airport? So quickly with pinkies, I move we approve consent agenda items 13A through 13E.
Second.
Case been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
If the commission would like to do their commission reports now, we can turn the broadcast off at the conclusion of the commission reports as we head into executive session.
All right, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, this past Saturday, I spoke at the retired and seniors volunteer program. It is a kind of a hidden gem for Garden City, is really well utilized, and it serves a multitude of programs within our community, and I was grateful to be at their banquet. Congratulations to Rose Christ, 31 years. It is an incredible accomplishment to be so loyal and to love this community so dearly to be in her position. That is so amazing. September is Savannah Heritage Month, but it also is Suicide Prevention Month, so please check out on those that you love, especially those that might, you haven't talked to in a while, so I highly encourage you to shoot a phone call, shoot a text to a family or friend who you haven't seen in a while. But there's also so many mental health crisis resources that we have in our community, especially those who are too afraid to seek help. You can call or text 988 at any time, and then there's also the crisis text line. You can text Coalition to 741-741. And also, our police department, you can also text 911. This is something that I actually just recently found out, which is an incredible resource for a community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Andrew.
So yeah, I want to say congratulations to Rose. That's, that's really an incredible accomplishment, and I know that it was a surprise, and so that made it even more special. October 1st will, will come and go, but I'll tell you, her influence and her impact on our community and on the staff all the way through will be felt for many, many years. I really appreciated the tour of the fire station. It's really, it's amazing the work that they're doing. I really, especially appreciate that it's a, it's a shared space between the fire, the EMS, and then the police department, and I think that they're working together, which we have done in so many, for so many, in so many different ways, and as we continue to work, especially first responders, I think it's, it's a powerful partnership that we need to continue. And so I'm looking forward as we transition, as we transition to be able to use that fire station and just to really see how well that works. So I'm really excited about that. I also just wanted to say, if you've never done a ride-along with one of Garden City's finest police officers, that was, it was very eye-opening. I've never driven that fast in a car in Garden City, and so that was, it was exciting. I, I did stay past, up past my bedtime. I usually am bed by 9:00, 9:30, I was up till 1:30. And, but I did see that, just the camaraderie between the fire department and also the police department, and I'll tell you, they really work hard at making sure they're very respectful and they're protecting us as citizens. And so it was, it was an amazing experience. I really enjoyed it. I don't want to stay up that late again. Like I said, it took me about an hour to come down from several of the rides I took on that night. I also want to just say congratulations to the Western Kansas Community Foundation. I really appreciate them stepping out. I know Matchday is one of their biggest projects, but I really appreciate some of the things that they are doing just to really bring attention, not only to downtown, but also just to our community. I know that they have grown exponentially, and the impact and the grants that they're making in our area and actually in the Western Kansas area are really making a difference. And so I just want to say thank you to them, and also just to make sure and encourage them to keep up the great work. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have Commissioner Landgraf. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sesna. Let's do, let's do Commissioner Sesna before Landgraf.
It doesn't matter, Mayor. Again, a great pre-meeting on the tour of the facility, and to all of the people that we did proclamations for, for today. I know we've gotten some rain over the last couple of days, and that really helps out on our lawns and for our fields and everything, but I just want to mention or just have a request for our community to please keep the weeds down in your areas. It really makes the community kind of look not pleasing. And I just had a question. I wasn't for sure, if we take care of between, between 156 and the bypass, that area leading up to the intersection of 156 and Mary Street there, that, that area right there.
I'm going to describe it incorrectly, but the side of the walls of the overpass?
No, beyond that, where you go, when you're on Mary Street and you're going up to 156 to the intersection, the, the traffic stop there, there's that field there. As you're, you go back, past the bypass, you're going towards 156, there's just a lot of weeds on the side of the road there.
We'll check on the location.
I'm not for sure if it's the state or the city, but if we could.
Sure.
Get somebody to kind of mow that, it just doesn't look very pleasing for.
Will do.
Not only our citizens, but people coming into the community.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, Commissioner Landgraf.
I just want to repeat what the other commissioner said regarding, it was nice having the pre-meeting tour of the fire station. I'm really looking forward to the museum at the fire station. I think that'll be a great place for students to be able, when they do go tour the fire station, also see kind of a bit of the history, see the older unit as well at the fire station. Also, congratulations to Rose, and thank you for all of those years of service here with us at the city. Also, looking forward to all of the upcoming events in the next couple of weeks, just kind of give people in the community an idea, if you ever are interested in different events, a good sheet sheet is just the meetings of note. There's so many different events going on in the city, and it's a great way to just kind of see what all is going on. Also, it came to my attention that on the city commission's website, where it has all of the commissioners listed on the city commission goals, it still has last year's goals on there. I was just wondering to know if that could potentially be updated to include this year's.
Yes, it can.
Yeah. And that is it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Nah, I'm next. I was just going down the list. Yeah, great week, great couple of weeks, and congratulations to Rose as well. That's, that's exciting, so. I do like to just, the walkthrough at the fire station, I can't believe you guys weren't like more excited, because this, this is the opportunity that you could see behind the walls before it's finished. I know you're going to be excited when it's completely done, but the, just the mechanics of everything, the building goes together, you know, how it's, you know, how the roof drains down and the pipes, and you can see those, some of them are exposed, some of them are not. You know, the, the metal studs that it's getting built for, the CMU block, and those are, you know, there's codes that require that type of construction, but there's also in case of a fire, that's, that slows the fire down and things, and so it is equipped with a fire suppression system, so that also helps. But I get kind of geeky with like those, I can go on and on for days describing kind of what's, what's in the walls and things of, of the, you know, the construction, so. But it was a great opportunity for everyone to go that went this morning to kind of see that construction and see those trades working together, somewhat similar to like any other construction or city, if that mattered, but just the way that they have to be on top of things to know where different ductwork has to go through a wall, and you can't go with your piping at the same location, so it's all coordinated with the different trades that are, that are there. So, yeah, amazing work that Crossland's doing onsite. We know that they completed the, their airport, and which is an amazing outcome of their construction abilities there, so looking forward to the completion on this fire station, so. And yeah, the, the workmanship with, between different departments with EMS, fire, and police department, so the museum is a nice factor to it, too, so we'll get to see some of those older fire rigs get displayed in that, in that area, so looking forward to that. But yeah, looking forward to all of the great, you know, things happening in Garden City. Glad that school's started. I've actually got a schedule, I can go to bed on time, get up on time, so that's just, it's, it's great, so. But just, you know, take notice of all the students out there driving and crossing pedestrian walks and things like that, so. With that, we'll end with those reports.
All right, Mayor, we can take up item 12D now. That's the request that the governing body consider going into executive session pursuant to KSA 75, the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship and for the specific purpose of contract negotiations. We would ask that the executive session be for 15 minutes, include myself, city attorney Jennifer Cunningham, assistant city attorney James Dummermuth, and assistant city manager Daniel Burke.
Do we need a break? Is that, is that good?
Okay.
Nope. Anyone want to make that motion?
Go ahead.
Mayor, move we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship for contract negotiation lasting 15 minutes, including city manager Matt Allen, city attorney Jennifer Cunningham, assistant city attorney James Dummermuth, and assistant city manager Daniel Burke, beginning at 2:48 and lasting 15 minutes.
Second.
Case been moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion pass.
And we'll conclude the meeting following the executive session, so Channel 8 can shut down.
Okay.